It's approximately 6:30. Let's go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, March 8th, 2012 meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. We call the roll, please.
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Here.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams. Dale Patrick.
Here.
John Dunham.
Here.
Deanna Walad.
Thank you. With seven board members present, we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and carry on as normal. Agenda item, actually before I start in on the agenda, if you missed it on your way in and would like to follow along with something in your hand, there are copies of the agenda and staff packets in the lobby behind them, or in between the doors there. Agenda item B, minutes, I don't believe we have any for approval. Agenda item C, special order of business and executive sessions, are there any disclosures tonight?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Patrick.
Yeah, in the case of 2012-025, my personnel, Jason Hodges, and he does work for our company, and I do work with him closely when he does, so just wanted to disclose that.
Does your relationship with the petitioner applicant, to your opinion, rise to the level of a conflict? Can you describe any financial interests that may be present or not present?
There's no financial interest personally. It's all company to company, and I do approve invoices and payments to them.
Okay. Mr. Cars?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Patrick, do you feel that you, based on that relationship, would you, do you feel you'll be able to have an unbiased position on this case and act accordingly?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Should we go ahead and keep it formal and make a motion to direct Mr. Patrick to participate? If so, someone please make that motion. Again, what was the case number, Mr. Patrick? Okay. Mr. Cars, thank you. Go ahead and state your motion for the record.
Oh, yes, thank you. I move to direct Mr. Patrick to participate in case 2012-025.
Mr. Vig, thank you for that second. Any further discussion by board members? Okay. Are there any objections to approval of the motion of directing Mr. Patrick to participate? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Patrick, for the disclosure, and look forward to your participation in that case. Are there any other disclosures tonight? Seeing none, okay. Agenda item C, two election of officers. Mr. Vig, would you like to take the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I wonder, in the interest of the public's time, if we could put that at the tail end of our agenda this evening?
I would be agreeable to that. Could you formalize it in a motion, and we'll make it happen?
I'll make an attempt. I move that we revise the agenda, item number C, two election of officers, to follow the regular business of the zoning board.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Denny, thank you for the second there. Any discussion or clarification necessary on that motion? Any opposition to approval? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move that agenda item, election of officers, and you're right, Mr. Vig, in the interest of the public's time, to the end of the agenda. That takes us to agenda item D, consent agenda. We have two resolutions for approval tonight, resolution number 2012-001 and 2012-002. Has everyone had a chance to read those resolutions for approval? Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Any? Ms. Fink?
Yes, I move we approve the resolutions for approval on the consent agenda.
Thank you. And a second, please. Mr. Dunham, thank you. Now, I guess I should ask, would anybody like to pull anything for discussion? Mr. Vig?
I'd like to pull resolution number 2012-002, please.
Okay. All right, so what we have before us then is a motion to approve resolution number 2012-001. Is there any opposition to approval of that resolution? Seeing none, resolution 2012-001 is approved with seven yea votes. Mr. Vig, would you like to speak to the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that, or at least I'm fairly certain, the motion I made in this case was, does not match the language in the title of the resolution, where it says to allow an accessory structure to be larger than the principal structure. The motion was actually to be 75 percent of the square foot area of the principal structure. And while it's covered in condition number two, that that limitation of 75 percent exists, I thought it might be a little bit cleaner if the title of the resolution were cleaned up to reflect the motion that was made.
I'll ask the board first, and then maybe ask staff to weigh in. Is there any negative implication that we may engage in if we go that route? Does the title of the variance tie back to the posting or affidavit, public notice?
Mr. Chair, the title of the variance should reflect motion actually made by the zoning board.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. I'd be agreeable to that. Any further discussion on making that change? Okay. Jill, do you need... Mr. Vig, thank you. Do you have the language of that motion? More or less?
In resolution 2012-002, I move that the title language of the resolution be changed. The words "larger than" be changed to read "75 percent of the square foot area of the existing house." Parenthesis, "principal structure."
Mr. Dunham, thank you for that second. Any discussion? Any opposition to approval of the amended resolution for approval? Seeing none, thank you. Motion passes with seven yea votes again. Thank you, Mr. Vig, for that change. All right, we don't have any appearance requests, no unfinished business, nothing on our, well, that was moved to our regular agenda, I guess. Moving on to agenda item H, public hearings. We have three cases before us tonight. Before we get started on those, I must read for the record the order of business for public hearings. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case, number, and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each member of the public has three minutes to testify. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, the staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for later adoption by the board. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from Case number 2012-025, is the petitioner, Jason Hodges, present?
Our architect owner is representative, and we have Dana Keane here from Northern Carolina.
Thank you for making yourself known. Staff, please provide sufficiency of notice for the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On February 15th, 2012, 44 public notice hearings were mailed to property owners within 600 feet. In addition to the staff packet, you have also received comments received after ZIBA packet was delivered, so between the comments, the one comment in the packet and this supplemental package, three public comments have been received in favor of granting the variance and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Seeing no objection to the sufficiency of notice, please go ahead and proceed with your presentation when you're ready.
Thank you. This is a variance from AMC 2145 to 10 to allow an encroachment into the 25-foot stream protection setback. A 16.5-foot encroachment into the 25-foot wide stream protection setback was discovered when the petitioner applied for a building permit to construct a new addition to the existing office building. The new addition is located on the opposite side of the building from the stream, and therefore is not a problem. The encroachment is not eligible for non-conforming rights. The petitioner is seeking an 18-foot variance or 72 percent into the 25-foot stream setback. Regarding the standards, staff finds that standard number one is not substantially met. The petition site contains over 4,200 square feet, and the minimum requirement is six... 42,000 square feet, I'm sorry. And the minimum required is 6,000 feet in the I-1 district. This lot is flat, except where the creek runs through it. The shape of the lot is irregular, as the rear lot line follows the contour of the creek. The physical constraints of the property are this irregularly shaped lot and the associated 25-foot stream setback, but the setback is not unique and applies to all of the property along the Campbell Creek. Regarding standard number two, staff finds that this standard is not substantially met. This is a large lot with no physical constraints other than the Campbell Creek, and there's enough property outside of the 25-foot stream setback to have an office building and a storage yard. Staff finds that standard three is not substantially met. As stated above, there is nothing peculiar about this lot, and the need for the variance is a result of the actions of the previous property owner. An addition to the office building was built into the 25-foot stream protection setback without a building permit sometime after the stream protection setback ordinance was enacted in 1985. Staff finds that standard number four is not substantially met, or I'm sorry, staff does find that standard four is substantially met. There are no building separation issues, drainage and runoff do not appear to be an issue, and none of the reviewing agencies objected to the granting of the variance. Staff finds that standard number five is substantially met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a use variance. Staff finds that standard number six is substantially met. There are no, we did not identify any area-wide impacts, and there are no health or safety issues. Staff finds that standard number seven is not substantially met. We find that the petitioner can make a reasonable use of the land without granting of the variance. As the encroachment does already exist, it may be considered the minimum variance needed. The recommendation is for denial, as standards one, two, three, and seven do not appear to be substantially met. If, after the public hearing, the board establishes findings that the standards are substantially met, the department recommends approval, subject to three conditions. There's two conditions listed in the report, and I'd like to add a third condition, based on a comment that was in the supplemental packet from flood hazard review. And that third condition would say, provide documentation to current planning that the shed on the east side of the office building located in the stream setback has been removed.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Do any board members have questions for staff? Mr. Cars?
Thank you. I was having issues figuring out whether I hit the screen or just raised my hand. Yes, I have two questions for staff on this case. The first one is with regards to the item three, and I did note the comments from flood hazard review. However, when I look on page three of the site plan, it does not appear that that shed is in the stream setback. Am I... I see their comment, but I'm not sure that that comment applies in this case.
Through the chair, the comment from flood hazard, they took some issue with the actual mapping of the stream, and they, they believe that the stream cuts further south, and that that shed would be in the stream setback, or in the floodway, the FEMA-mapped floodway.
Yeah, thank you. I read, yeah, I missed that part of their comment. Thank you. And then the second question is, again, going back to figure three, it's not hatched, but it appears this variance applies to the approximate top, or north eight feet of the existing structure? Is that approximate?
Through the chair, yes. I see the dashed line cutting across the northern part, and it would apply to everything north of that hatched line.
Thank you.
So, for my own personal reference, then, in relation to the watershed management, flood hazard review comments about the FEMA-mapped floodway, then, does that FEMA floodway, as shown as whatever relevant map needs to be drawn upon, show the stream almost taking a hard right if you're going from north to south and running almost parallel to the east side of the building?
That is my understanding.
Any other questions for staff, by board members? I do have a question, Ms. Iverson. On page 41 of the staff packet, in, I believe it's Ms. Cox's report, there is reference to a fence encroaching in the right-of-way off Hartzell Road. Do you know if that encroachment has been remedied per the recommendation for obtaining an encroachment permit? Third paragraph from the bottom on page 41.
Mr. Chair, I, as I am presenting this case on Francis's behalf, I'm not totally familiar with all of the details, but it would be appropriate, as a condition, to the variance to require them to get an encroachment permit if that hasn't been resolved, or if we are unsure whether that has been resolved.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. I'll ask a board member to address it if we can't get additional information from the petitioner. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Iverson, very much for presenting on Mr. McGlaughlin's behalf. Would the petitioner's representative please come forward? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Scott Jones, J-O-N-E-S.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. You'll have 10 minutes for your presentation. Please let me know if you'd like to reserve any time for rebuttal.
Okay, we should be fine. So, thank you for your report. I'm Scott Jones, architect. I was hired to, I've worked with a client in the past, but this time I was hired to, you know, produce documents and get permitting for them to add on a two-story addition on the opposite end of the building, and that's what, you know, as part of this process, is what brought to light the encroachment on the other side. Here also is, on behalf of the owners, Dana Keane. We also have Ken Lang, Lang &amp; Associates, who's the surveyor, so he can answer some of the questions, maybe, that we were just talking about. If I could just start with what, prefacing what we were just talking about, the shed is, as part of the permit for the addition, we've already agreed to remove the shed, that is on the plot plan that was proposed, and there's no objection by the owner to remove that shed. It was, I believe it was a comment that was zoning and flood both, but, as mentioned, we agreed to remove it. The stream does, you know, not run, as shown on there, obviously, they can't survey every little point of that. With regards to the north-south property line that you were looking at, that you were just questioning, it pretty much does turn and follow the property line. If you look at the bigger pictures in the packet and aerials, you'll see that in the past, I assume pre-'85, the stream, you know, was manipulated, obviously, to follow those Just before I respond to some of the comments, yeah, so, based on aerial photography and Irma's report, we know that the encroachment occurred somewhere between '86 and '88. We have no record of any permit being, or, you know, permit process being done on that addition at the time. The current owner has been in there about a year. With response, with comment number one, finding number one, we'd like to note a few things. It is an I-1 zone. There's, in this I-1 section, there's 208 lots, only 20 lots, or less than 10 percent, have frontage to Little Campbell Creek. It was mentioned in the finding that the lot is flat. We do not agree with that. It is, it slopes to the west, not very steeply, but it does slope and sheet drain to the west, which in this case is Hartzell, Hartzell Road, and primarily slopes away from the creek. The landscape, as part of the addition, we will, we are going to be adding enhancement, buffer, or, I'm sorry, enhancement, visual enhancement landscaping that will be along Hartzell, that was brought up by zoning, stormwater in particular. So, as a condition of getting the permit, and as a condition of the 2010 plat, landscaping was supposed to have been done before, it wasn't. As a condition of us doing this addition, we have to put that in. So, where I'm going with that is, we have sheet draining going to the west, away from the creek, that's going to be picked up by landscaping that's, we're already, you know, under permit to do. Undo hardship, number two, we have, the 25-foot stream setback comes up with, that's about 9,600 square feet, or 22 percent of the lot. So, you know, it's our opinion, and the encroachment is about 800 square feet of that, or 8.3 percent of the setback. It's our opinion that removing 800 square feet of, you know, 4,000-square-foot building is an impact to the owner and the owner's business. It's worth noting again that the encroachment was not created by the current owner. The hardship here, this is responding to number three, the hardship is just that it's, you know, taken away that 800 square feet that they need to run their business. In fact, we're adding 1,600 square feet, you know, within a year of them purchasing these properties because, to support their business. So, you know, it's our argument that, you know, it does create a hardship by removing that square footage. Number four, basically, just want to, we have the letters of support that have been referenced that go with that. We didn't have anybody at the, within planning or municipality that, as part of the addition review, objected to the encroachment remaining in place. Number five, we agree. Number six, we agree. Number seven, it's been stated that, you know, the owner could make reasonable use of the land without the variance, but, you know, to be fair to the owners, to Northern Power Lines' operation, in the fact that, you know, it is in an I-1 zone, which allows for 100 percent lot coverage, I don't think it's, you know, I think it's hard to, you know, unless you're the owner, to determine how much of that lot you need to operate your business successfully. In this case, clearly, with the addition and the equipment that they have, and the fact that they bought this lot and building a year ago to get more room for their expanding business, you know, it's our opinion that they do need full use of the lot. Just a few things in summary, you know, the lot does drain to the west. We are putting the landscaping in. There is no change to the site in terms of, as a requirement of the addition, in terms of pavement, parking, fencing, anything. We're, we have an 800-square-foot footprint of addition that we're doing, that's two stories, and there was a previous addition there that we demoed. So, by and large, we're leaving, except for the required landscaping, we're, it's, you know, it's, the intent is to leave it the way it is. And, you know, I think it's of note that the watershed, or Watershed Management Services does not see any improvements to water quality by removing the building, and any disturbance in the area actually increases risk of hazards entering the stream. So, it was the consensus of everybody we talked to before we went down this path that it would be least impacting to leave it the way it is, and it certainly would be least impacting to the owner's business. Welcome, any questions you have?
Did either of you want to add anything to that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do board members have any questions for Mr. Jones? Okay. Seeing none. Does staff have any questions, Ms. Iverson? Okay. Mr. Jones, thank you for your presentation. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, go ahead and move on. I guess there's no need for rebuttal, Mr. Jones. Nothing to rebut against? With that, I guess the matter rests with the board, so I'll ask a board member for a positive motion in this case. I'll ask a board member for a positive motion in this case. Mr. Cars, thank you. Go ahead and state your motion, if you would.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to case 2012-025, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2145 to 10 to allow an encroachment into the 25-foot stream protection setback, subject to conditions one and two on page seven, adding condition three to, for the petitioner to provide documentation to planning that the shed located east of the existing building has been removed, and condition number four, obtain an encroachment permit for the portion of the fence located in the Hartzell Road right-of-way with the right-of-way department of project man, or of developmental services.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Was that second yours, Mr. Dunham? Thank you. Mr. Cars, when you're ready, and if you'd like to, go ahead and speak to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I intend to support this motion and giving significant weight, probably the most significant weight, to the comments from watershed management, as the petitioner referred to us at the end of their presentation, their comments on page 25 of the staff packet, as well as the comments from flood hazard review that were provided to us in the supplemental information. Specific to the standards, standard one, I find that that standard is met. I've always, I'll just make the statement, I do think that the stream orientation and the location are a exceptional, are a, are an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance to this property. As the applicant has presented, there's less than 20% of the lots, the I-1 zone lots in this area have frontage on Little Campbell Creek, so I do find that that is an exceptional, exceptional physical condition. Standard two, the, this is I-1 zone property, and the maximum best use of this specific property would be to place the building towards the back of the lot. Not saying that that's right, or that should allow them to be in that creek setback, but when the approximately 20% of the lot is covered by stream setback, that does affect their, the opportunity to build on that lot. So, I do find that that standard is met. Standard three, I find that that is met, again, with regard to the, as the two points that staff has made, A, the physical constraint of this lot is irregularly shaped, Little Campbell Creek is present. Regarding B, the need for the variance as a result of the actions that, or, I'm sorry, regarding sub-part B of that standard, I refer again to the watershed management letter, where they state, you know, they've issued a letter of non-objection, and that no significant improvement to water quality or riparian habitat would occur by removing this portion of the building. Standard four, five, and six, I concur with staff that those standards are met. And with regard to standard seven, that this is the minimum variance granted, is the minimum variance. I do find that it's minimal, that it is minimal, in that as watershed management has no objection, and to remove the building would cause further disturbance within the creek setbacks, you know, taking that train of thought a little bit further, removing any portion would be a disturbance. So, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Mr. Dunham, would you like to add anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add under standard number one that, to, in addition to what Mr. Cars said, we are testimony tonight that the stream setback may in fact be larger and of a different configuration than what was plotted on this lot, and I find that to be a special circumstance as well, that I think created some unusual conditions for the property as well. And I concur with his other findings.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Would any other board members like to weigh in or make comment?
Just briefly, I intend to support the motion as well. By principle, I normally hold stream setbacks in high regard, but as Mr. Cars pointed out, watershed management's comments of no appreciable improvement based on alternative action in this case carry quite a bit of water, if I can throw that pun in there. I intend to support the motion. Unless there's any other discussion, we're, let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes with seven yea votes. I must read for the record. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Thank
Our second case, 2012-026, is the petitioner Keith and/or Julie Curtis present. Have any of them here? Good evening. Ms. O'Brien, I believe this is your case. If so, please provide sufficiency of notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On February 15th of this year, 126 public hearing notices were mailed. There were no public hearing notices or electronic notices returned either in favor of or in opposition to the variance request. However, the applicant, there were five notices returned unclaimed. However, the applicant with his application submitted three testimonials of non-objection from surrounding neighbors. This is a variance to allow an existing structure to encroach into a 20-foot primary front yard setback in the R2A zoning. The property is located south of West 54th Avenue and west of North Star Street. The property has a bit of a lengthy history. It was originally developed in 1957. The petition site is 10,500 square feet, and it exceeds the minimum lot size required in the R2A zoning district. It's, as a corner lot, the primary front yard setback, the 20-foot primary front yard setback, is located along North Star Street, and a 10-foot secondary front yard setback is located along West 54th. At one time, the property did enjoy non-conforming rights, which were determined in 1983. The principal structure enjoyed non-conforming rights. There was a carport that encroached into the secondary front yard setback. It did not enjoy non-conforming rights, and it has been removed. In 1997, the owners needed to enlarge the building by digging a full basement, adding a first floor, so they did a building move of the existing two stories. When it was, the construction was finished, the two stories were placed on the new construction. In applying for another building permit in 2011, an updated ASB was determined to be needed, and at that time, the encroachment was discovered, that the applicants during their construction process had every intention of bringing the lot into full conformance with the R2A district regulations. And that's when they discovered there was indeed, at the largest point of encroachment, a 7, 1.7-foot encroachment into the primary front yard setback. In reviewing the seven standards, in standard number one, there did not appear to be any unique physical characteristics in terms of elevations, wetlands, or streams that would distinguish this lot from every other lot in the neighborhood. However, there may, it has an unusual, unique development history in that it did have non-conforming rights. The encroachment existed since before 1957. It was not noticed until a building permit was applied for in 1983, and it has existed for nearly 50 years, without notice or injury, apparent injury to the surrounding neighborhood. Although strictly speaking, standard number one is not met, it is possible that there are unique characteristics to the development of this lot. Although there are not physical, in terms of standard number two, there are not physical characteristics, requiring the building to be brought into conformance would impose significant hardship, because the housing stock has been updated, a full basement, sunnot tubes have been installed, and the building cannot be moved at this point. The other alternative would be to remove the non-conforming portion of the structure, which would adversely affect the stability of the dwelling, and so that is partially met. And number three, it is not self-imposed in terms of, the applicant has stated, and there is evidence, that they attempted to construct in a conforming manner. They did remove the non-conforming carport to bring it into conformance, but it does appear that there was an unintentional error that resulted in the 1.7-foot encroachment. In terms of conditions four, five, six, and seven, all of those conditions were basically found to be substantially met. The encroachment is minor in nature, and it is not readily apparent. It's a corner lot, so the encroachment does not deny any light, air, or open space to surrounding properties, because there is sufficient separation from adjoining lots that they would not be adversely affected. The lot area and the 100-foot-wide lot width exceed the minimum requirement of the R2A, and it does carry out, the development in the lot do carry out the intention of a low density in the R2A zoning district. If the primary front yard of the petition site had been determined to be along West 54th Avenue, a variance for this property would not be required, but it was determined to be along North Star. And as mentioned, for over 50 years, the encroachment has existed without apparent harm to the surrounding neighborhood, and the petitioner has submitted the testimonials basically in support of the variance. It is the minimum variance that will allow the structure to remain in its current location, and there does not really appear to be a reasonable conforming alternative available to the petitioner. Staff did have to recommend denial, as the first standard was not found to be either partially or substantially met, in the strictest meaning of special conditions being of a physical nature, but it certainly is, was the intent of the applicant to conform to the district regulations. So, if in fact during, after their deliberation, the board does find that all standards have been partially or substantially met, the department does recommend two, does provide two conditions for the board's consideration, listed on page 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Any board members have questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Thank you again, Ms. O'Brien. Oh, Mr. Vig, using his touchscreen like he should. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr. Vig.
I came in late. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Brien, the defining of the primary front yard being along the North Star frontage, has that been the case since the zoning was imposed on the property originally, or do you have a history of that?
Through the chair, Mr. Vig, actually, the yard determination was made in 1983, according to the non-conforming letter and determination.
Okay.
So, it wasn't imposed at the initial zoning back in 1971.
Okay, thank you. I guess there's a quick follow-up and clarification again. So, in 1983, when it was identified, then it was as it is today, the primary, is North Star and the secondary was 54th, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I did speak with staff in land use review to ask why typically vehicular access to a lot is from the front yard, and looking at the aerial photographs of the larger area, just about all of the lots that have frontage onto West 54th do access West 54th, and I was wondering why that determination was made in this fashion, and they said, "Well, the north-south alignment along North Star, that was the prevailing front yard pattern", and that was the explanation I received.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Mr. Patrick, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question on the, if it would have been determined that West 54th would have been the frontage, what would have been the setback required on North Street, the first side setback?
Through the chair, Mr. Patrick, if the determination that the 20-foot primary front yard setback was along West 54th, then a 10-foot secondary front yard setback would have been along North Star Street, and a 5-foot side yard setback would be required along the west and the south property boundaries.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Thank you again, Ms. O'Brien. If the petitioner would please come forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Julie Curtis, C-U-R-T-I-S. My husband, Keith Curtis, C-U-R-T-I-S.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Curtis. You'll have 10 minutes combined for your presentation, 10 minutes total, rather, and we ask that you speak to the seven standards that staff walked us through as well.
Okay. Basically, looking at the standards, we have partially or substantially met six of them, and I think would probably just need to talk about number one, which definitely our property would not be able to meet anyway, but I would like them, I would like you to consider the findings from the planning in reference to the exceptions that are listed there because of all the different building, et cetera, that has been done on the property since 1957. Pretty much, it's all explanatory, with the exception to number one, and we would just truly, you know, appreciate if you would, you know, accept that, I guess in reference to the special circumstances. So, I guess if you have any questions for us?
Okay, we might have a few. I'll start with, oh, Mr. Dunham, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Curtis, how long have you owned the property?
We started renting in '87 and rented for seven years, and then purchased it, so let's see, about '94, '95.
Okay. And I assume that, I saw some information in the packet about a variance being applied for for in 1997. Were you aware of that, or?
When we originally started to do the structure, our plan was to bring everything into compliance because it was an older structure. There was a lot of fence area in the corner lots, we removed all that, we removed the carport, and the plan was, with the addition, to bring it back into conformity and into the variance. And the only thing that we figured had happened was, and we have pictures in there to kind of show how the building was setting up, is when the structure of the house was moved to the road so that we could dig down and put the basement, that somewhere it had shifted in that move, because when they were getting ready to move the property back over, we have a tape where we showed that said, we're showing the, having the mover, it says, you know, we need to move it 1.9 inches, we were moving it back
Can you speak up?
Into conformity.
Yes.
And somewhere along the line, something happened in that, so when it was set down and we got the as-built, we found out that it was pretty much where it was before, and one corner was one inch moved.
Okay.
So my husband could probably explain.
Can I explain what happened?
Sure.
Okay, when the house mover picked the house up, he moved the house forward. At the time he's moving the house forward, he actually shifted the house a couple feet to the left, if you're looking at from the street, and when he's putting the house back over the hole, I told him, we need to shift the house 1.7. I'm actually behind the house with a video recorder, and they got rollers on top of the steel beams, and I'm sitting there talking, I said, right now, we're shifting the house 1.7 to the other side. Well, when he did move the house out, I was gone all that day when he reached, so it was kind of a miscommunication. He'd already moved the house two foot one way, and then we moved back the other way, and we're exactly where it was. And it's, when we got the thing from the as-built, I thought it was just a mistake, and they looked off the old as-built, and I went and measured off the neighbor's fence, and I'm like, oh, no. That's when we found out, so it really happened, it was really just a weird mistake.
It was a non-intentional error.
Totally.
All right, thank you.
A quick question, can you confirm for the board and the record, where is your primary access to the property? Is it from 54th, or is it from North Star Street?
From 54th. That's where it's always, yeah.
It's from 54th, but we are planning on actually putting a garage on eventually, and the garage will probably enter through. And I know what you, I understand if we do the garage, we were set up to actually do a garage in this plan, and we decided to put that on hold for this time being until we actually paid the house off, and we want to just basically do the garage and incur any more debt. So, and we were approved for a house, a garage to come out like 19 and a half or 20 foot, that was on the plans, and we went and did this job, we just didn't continue through with it. But if they were going to change that around, I don't know if they could change that or something like that, then we'd only be able, come out 10 foot, so that would really, you know.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Okay, Ms. O'Brien, does staff have any questions for the petitioner?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Curtis. Go ahead and have a seat. And is there anyone from the public wishing to speak tonight on this case? Okay, seeing no one, no need for rebuttal, I guess. Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Curtis, if you could indicate whether or not you need to provide any rebuttal, so if so, I guess, please come forward, or I'm seeing the no. Okay, thank you. Another one of those things we have to do for the record. Thanks. All right, with that, let's handle this as a board. I'll ask a board member to please put forward a positive motion in this case. Public hearing's closed in that case. Mr. Dunham, please go ahead and state your motion.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of 2012-026, I move that the board grant a variance from AMC 2140 040G1, minimum yard requirements in the R2A two-family residential district to allow an existing building to encroach into required yard setback.
And were there conditions that you wanted to reference there, Mr. Dunham?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add conditions of approval that are listed by staff on page 11.
Those two conditions there, thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Vig, thank you for the second. Mr. Dunham, please go ahead and speak to your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I intend to support this variance request. I believe that all the conditions are substantially met. This is, in my opinion, a de minimis variance, one, because it's existed in this condition for as long as it has, for 50 years, and no apparent harm has come to anybody in the neighborhood as a result of it, and that I believe that the petitioners tried their best to alleviate the problem and correct it, but through some error in communication with their contractor, it wasn't resolved. So I think that they made a best effort here. I think that they tried to comply, they made the effort to do it, and it just didn't, it didn't happen in a way it should have happened, so. I find that those are extraordinary circumstances for condition number one, and find that those standards are met. I actually believe that the standard number two is met, and that the petitioners actually endured a hardship already to try to resolve this, and a lot really not their fault here. I don't believe it was self-imposed, so I believe that that standard is met as well. And I concur with the staff's findings that standard four, five, six, and seven are met.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Vig, would you like to speak to the motion as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too intend to support the motion, and in the case of standard number one, I think exceptional physical circumstances, the fact that the primary yard was determined to be off North Star Street, which is the narrowest dimension of the lot, and certainly the lots to the north and south of them that are interior, you know, between the east-west side streets, that makes sense, but on a lot that also fronts the east-west side street, where that's the long dimension of the lot, that makes sense for primary access to come off of that. So while I understand the determination was made that way, I think it's, I think it's a bit unusual for that to be the case in this, for this particular lot, and for some of the historical reasons that staff mentioned, I think there are enough special circumstances that create an exceptional condition on this lot. And so I think that standard number one is substantially met. Standard number two, again, because of those physical circumstances, I believe standard number two is met as well. I agree with Mr. Dunham's findings on the remainder of the standards, and like I said, I do intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Would any of the board members like to comment on the motion? Okay, let's vote. The motion passes with seven yea votes, and again, I shall read into the record. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Should we carry on? Case number three. All right, case 2012-027, are the petitioners Bruce and/or Mary Kiesling present? If so, please indicate they're here.
They are not.
They are not, representative?
Yes.
Good evening. Ms. Iverson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On February 15th, 2012, 55 public hearing notices were mailed. As of now, there are actually two supplemental packets. One has one additional comment, and the other has three additional comments, bringing us to a total of eight comments have been received so far in favor of this variance. This is a variance from AMC 2140 030H to permit a lot to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of 30 percent. If the variance is approved, then the lot coverage would be 34 percent. This is in the R1A district. The two-story house and attached two-car garage was built in 1982. It appears that the original house was built with 35 percent lot coverage. This structure is not eligible for non-conforming rights. The petitioner would like to replace a stairway on, to the second floor door with an arctic entry to a new front door on the first floor. So resolution of this will allow them to make that change, and I believe in doing that change, they actually will decrease the lot coverage from 35 to 34 percent. So in regards to the findings, staff found that standard number one is not substantially The requested variance does not arise from the physical conditions such as creeks, wetlands, or slopes that are particular to this lot. There are no physical constraints that limit the development potential of this property. However, this lot on the south side of Jarvey Drive, all the lots are adjacent to the railroad corridor, and then beyond that, the turnigan arm, which give these lots the appearance of having very large backyards because the railroad tracks are located very far from their houses. And many property owners have maintained the yards beyond their own property line into the railroad's property, so there's this sense of having larger yards. Staff finds that standard number two is not substantially met. The lot is not affected by natural features. It is roughly the same size or larger than other lots in that neighborhood, and the lot is 474 square feet larger than the standard minimum R1A lot. The physical conditions of the property do not limit the ability to construct a house or garage. However, large two-story houses with attached two-car garages are common in the neighborhood, and this lot does not appear to be more overbuilt than any of the other lots in the neighborhood, and the house still meets all of the required yard setbacks. Standard number three, staff finds is not substantially met. As stated in standard one, there are no particular physical circumstances. The need for the variance is a result of the desire of the owner to keep the existing house, which was overbuilt for the site when it was originally constructed. The current owner is not the original owner, and they are seeking to reduce their lot coverage from, like I said, 35 to 34 percent through this change to the stairway and arctic entry. Staff finds that standard number four is substantially met. There are no structural separation issues, drainage and runoff are not a problem, and there have been no objections from the neighbors. Staff finds that standard number five is substantially met, the request for variance is dimensional and not a use variance. Staff finds that standard number six is substantially met. We have not identified any area-wide health or safety issues. And staff finds that standard number seven is not substantially met. We find that the petitioner could make reasonable use of the land without granting the variance. It has more area than the minimum R1A lot requirement, and there is ample room for all structures to meet the 30 percent maximum lot coverage regulation. The department finds that standards one, two, and, one, two, three, and seven are not substantially met, and therefore must recommend denial of the variance if, after the public hearing, the board finds that all seven are, standards are substantially met, the approval should be subject to conditions, or one and two of the staff report on page eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Staff have any, or excuse me, any board members have questions for staff? Mr. Dunham, go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering if you could elaborate on standard number seven a little more. What could they remove from this house that would bring it into conformity with the 30 percent lot coverage? And not compromise it structurally?
Through the chair, Mr. Dunham, I think that that is a good question and a good point. I did not prepare the staff report as well, and I cannot speak to exactly the line of logic written in that.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Ms. Iverson, would there be any records from the original construction in 1982, what, if there was a building permit approved for that at a 35 percent lot coverage at the
Through the chair, I was just looking to see if we had comments from land use review. They typically do a very thorough job of stating the chronology of a property. Without that, I would just defer to what was written in the staff report, which says that the house, two-story house and attached two-car garage were built in 1982. It appears that the original house was built with 35 percent lot coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I do have one question, Ms. Iverson. I recollect discussion of deck removal on the backside of the house. I'm either misremembering, or I'm remembering correctly, and would like some information on that. I will ask the petitioner as well, but can you speak to that at all? And if not, like I said, I'll ask the petitioner's representative.
Mr. Chair, you recollect from a previous?
No, I believe somewhere in the staff packet, there was discussion of removal of some deck on the south side of the house, when in combination with the new arctic entry and removal of the existing stairs and replacement, you're taking away some, you're adding some, and there's a net reduction of 1 percent.
That's correct. That's my understanding. My understanding is that that's on the front side of the house, that they're removing the front entry the front entry stairs that go up and replacing that with an arctic entry that will decrease the lot coverage by 1 percent when it's all said and done.
Okay. So, the only improvements to the house will be there on that, the front side there then?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none again, thank you, Ms. Iverson. If the petitioner's representatives would please come forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Okay, my name is Danelle Seetomona, S.E.E.T.O.M.O.N.A.
Good evening, Ms. Seetomona.
Hello.
You'll have 10 minutes for your presentation. Again, I'll ask that you speak to the seven standards, particularly those that staff has found may not be met. And let me know if you want any time for rebuttal afterwards.
Okay.
Or now.
Well, my husband and I, Teri and Danelle, we represent the homeowners Bruce and Mary Kiesling, who could not be here tonight. Mary's 90-year-old mother had an emergency in Florida. So, we would like to thank the staff for their advice and help regarding this petition. And we'd like to thank you for your time in listening to our request. In regards to standards one, two, three, and seven, we do feel that we have met those standards. The city did object, the argument that the existence of a house on the property at the time of purchase doesn't meet the requirement, but we feel that this argument is valid. It is logical to assume that at the time the home was built, the city approved the construction and issued a certificate of occupancy since various owners have occupied the home. When the current homeowners purchased the home, there was no documentation or disclosures mentioning the non-conforming status of the structure. This home has not been modified since its original construction in 1982. And with our proposed variance, the coverage will be reduced by approximately 1 percent. In regards to standard number two, the source of this variance request is the desire to create an entrance to the home that is safe and wheelchair accessible as the homeowners are in their 60s and reaching a point in their life where a wheelchair may be a reality. The current entrance is on the second level only and is very dangerous. The picture is on page 21 of the packet. The homeowners generally put up caution tape in the winter months to warn mail carriers, children, and guests about the dangers of using these stairs. This leaves the garage as the only ground-level entrance point to this home. In order to remove the second-story stairs and create a lower-level entrance, the homeowners become trapped in the city's requirements to conform to current lot coverage regulations, which would mean removing approximately 425 square feet of their home. In regards to standard three, we feel that this hardship is not self-imposed due to the fact that the Kieslings purchased this home on this lot that was seemingly approved by the city. And finally, for standard seven, we believe that the purpose of the maximum lot coverage regulation is to limit the feeling of dense living between neighbors. We are not proposing to encroach into any of the current setbacks. And in fact, we'll be removing a rear deck and stairs along with the front stairs and landing to make a move towards conformity. We simply want to maintain the majority of lot coverage currently existing on the lot today. The rear property of this line, or the rear property line of this house abuts to the 100-foot wide railroad right-of-way that homeowners along this corridor have been allowed to use in their landscaping. And the visuals are on page 10 and 23 of this packet. You can see all the homes along that corridor sort of employ that section of land in their, as their backyard. And beyond that is the inlet. There is a real feeling of openness to this property and that allowing this variance would not impose a sense of high-density living on anyone in the neighborhood. There have been numerous letters of support from the surrounding neighbors as they all recognize the enhancement and updated, the enhancement and updated house springs to the neighborhood. Granting this variance will allow the homeowners to safely enter their home without worry of climbing exterior steps to their front door. Thank you again for taking time to listen, and we ask that you approve our variance.
Thank you, Ms. Seetomona. If you'll hold on just a minute, we may have some questions for you.
Oh, sorry.
Any board members have questions for Ms. Seetomona? Okay. I guess we don't? Oh. Okay. All right. Staff have any questions for petitioner representative?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public testimony. If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak to this case, please come forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Kenneth Lang, L-A-N-G. And I'd like to speak in support of this variance application. And I would ask that, do you take a look at the photo on page 21? I've lived in this neighborhood for over 30 years and I must drive by this home on a daily basis. And I would just like to point out, this photo doesn't do it justice, but that's a very unattractive stairway on the front. And anything they can do to get rid of that would be an improvement that I'm sure all of the neighbors would appreciate. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I hope you will support the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. If you'll hold on for just a minute, we may have a question or two. Just to clarify, you live on, do you live on Jarvie Drive?
Actually, I live on George Bell Circle, which is off of Jarvie Drive.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lang, for your testimony. If there's anyone else from the public wishing to testify, please come forward. And again, please state and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mark Perry, P-E-R-R-Y. I'm a neighbor of the Kieslings. I live across the street, a few houses down. I frequently walk the neighborhood and pass their house. And I will have to second Mr. Lang. The existing front structure with the second-floor entry is visually obtrusive. And the proposed modification of the structure, from my perspective, would only improve the viewscape for the folks in the neighborhood. As the petitioners have pointed out, there will be no other visual impact to the neighbors or passersby. Jarvie Drive has got the Ocean View Park about a block away from the house in question. So, there's a lot of foot traffic along Jarvie Drive. And the change there won't affect their viewscape and the sense of encroaching views between houses or landscaping between the houses. And so, I would hope that the board could see the value to this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any board members have questions for Mr. Perry? Ms. Iverson, do staff have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Perry, for your testimony. And is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Okay. Would the petitioner's representatives like to rebut anything that was offered in testimony? They've indicated no. Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll close the public, public hearing. And the matter now rests with the board. I'll ask a board member to please put forward a positive motion in this case. Mr. Dunham, please state your motion.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of 2012-027, I move that the board grant a variance from AMC 2140030H to permit a lot. It's actually to permit a building to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of 30 percent. If the variance is approved, then the lot coverage would be 40, or 34 percent. Subject to the conditions listed by staff on page eight of the staff packet, two conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Was that second yours, Mr. Cars?
Yes, it was.
All right. Mr. Dunham, please speak to your motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I feel like I'm going to make it unanimous tonight and support this motion as well. I find that standard number one is met. I think that there's some very unusual circumstances here in that this property doesn't butt up to another piece of residential property. It actually is, butts up to the railroad property. It looks like bigger property than it actually is. It doesn't have that feeling that it's a congested piece of property. I believe that, you know, it meets the intent of the zoning regulations of not having a congested property. And it meets all the setbacks. So, I find that standard number one is met. I guess that standard number two is met as well. And the reason I say this is that the appearance is normal and it's, and it really is not a congested-looking piece of property. I'm just forming some thoughts here. I believe that it probably, if we were to deny this variance, it would probably deny them reasonable use of their land. As stated by staff earlier, this, this property has existed in this state since 1982. My count, that makes it 30 years. And I don't believe reducing the size of the building serves any useful purpose. And the petitioners have already stated that they are going to reduce to the maximum, maximum extent possible what, what they can and reduce the lot coverage from 35 percent to 34 percent. I don't believe this is a self-imposed hardship, so I find that staff, our standard number three is met. The petitioners are not the initial, are not the initial owners. And in fact, they probably didn't even know there was a problem with this property. And it sounds like that only recently came to light. I concur with staff's finding that condition number four is met and that condition number five is met. And that condition number six is met. And I find that condition number seven is also met because I believe that this is a minimum variance that would allow reasonable use of the land. I don't believe you can reduce the lot coverage any more than what, what the petitioners have already offered without compromising the soundness of the structure. And with that, I will let others speak.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Mr. Cars, would you like to add anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also intend to support the motion, concurring with the findings of Mr. Dunham. In addition, I'd like to add a couple other, other points. And that really haven't been touched on in the findings, but were brought up in the applicant's written submittal, and that is of safety. And we've seen the pictures of the stairs. And we've discussed in the past on previous cases, the validity of arctic entries. And while each case stands on its own merits, I think this, this is a prime example of a case that warrants granting a variance for the purpose of constructing that, that arctic entry. And the, the location of it is such that, as Mr. Dunham has brought up, we, we aren't expanding into any of the setbacks. We, we aren't expanding the exterior of the footprint at all with, with the granting of the variance. So, I intend to support the motion. And speaking to the specific standings, specific findings again, standard one, I do concur, it's met. And Mr. Dunham hit, hit the word, or took the words right out of my mouth when he spoke to the feel of the lot and that it actually does feel larger because of the topography and the, the railroad providing the buffer to the back of the lot. Standard two is met again regarding the arctic entries. I feel they're warranted, and in this case, it's warranted for safety. And standard three is met. The building hasn't been modified since its original, you know, original construction. Standard four, five, and six, I concur that they're met. And standard seven, again, they're not proposing to encroach into any of the setbacks. And they're just covering what is the existing footprint right now. So, I do find that that standard is met as it is. The addition appears to be minimal. So, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Any other board member comments in favor or perhaps opposition to the motion? Mr. Vig, go ahead.
Thank you. I think Mr. Dunham and Mr. Cars have done a good job of laying out their logic and reasoning behind the findings they just proposed, and I agree with them. I was just going to mention that about a year ago, prior to Mr. Dunham rejoining the board, we had a very similar lot coverage case along Jarvie Drive, that we found the, the presence of the railroad on the backside, a contributing factor to just what you described, Mr. Dunham, in providing that sense of openness and, and low density. And so, we've taken that into consideration in prior cases. And for that reason, I support what you were saying, and I support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Any other, any other comments? Okay. With that, let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes with seven yea votes. And one more time for the record. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its base, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Again, thanks to staff, thank you to the petitioners, petitioners' representatives, and of course, members of the public for coming to testify tonight. That closes our last public hearing. And the business we need to do for those. So, can we take care of reports first? Or is that where we moved elections to? I was hoping to get one last report as chairman in before things change. Well, no, no. No, let's go ahead and take care of the elections right now. We're by ourselves for the most part, except for staff, who has to stick around with us a little bit longer. So, let's take care of our elections. Mr. Vig, do you have something you want to say, or did I just not X you out there?
You didn't clear me off.
Okay. Now, in years past, I have kind of glossed over how these elections actually work. And I think because of that, I'm sitting in the chair I'm sitting today. So, I'll ask some help in proceeding and how to proceed through this election process. But clearly, we just have three officers on the board, parliamentarian, vice-chair, and chair. I don't think I can make any nominations. But again, as I stated in my email earlier in the week, I hope that anyone who is interested and willing, go ahead and either nominate themselves, someone else, or in some other fashion, step forward to meet their interest. So, let's maybe go ahead and start with parliamentarian, if that works. Mr. Cars?
Yes, I find that Mr. Vig has done an outstanding job as parliamentarian, and I would like to nominate him to continue in that role.
Mr. Vig, I think this is where you either accept or deny that nomination.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to, barring anyone else's interest. I don't want to stand in anyone's way here.
If it's a one-person race, you're willing to. Any other nominations for parliamentarian, any other interest out there?
I think that comment of, I don't want to stand in anyone's way, is going to be a common, comment this evening.
Does it take a second?
Oh, yeah.
Does it? Probably so. Does it take a second for the nomination? He's accepted. He's accepted. Okay, we'll do it that way, then. Are there any objections to the nomination of Mr. Vig in a second term as parliamentarian? Seeing none? Okay, that nomination stands. Now, do we go ahead and vote on that? Mr. Vig slides in there with the victory.
I'll buy coffee in the morning.
Yes, squeaks in. All right, vice chair, Mr. Cars has dutifully served in that role. Anything you'd like to share about the import of that position prior to opening it up to nomination? Or just go ahead and--
I've got a 10-minute speech that I have all planned out, but I'll save everybody from that. I don't know.
Any nominations for vice chair for the board?
Mr. Dunham, would you be willing to serve as vice chair?
Yes.
Emphatically.
Is that your speech?
All right. So do we ask for other nominations, or just deal with that one? Any other nominations for vice chair? Anybody wanting to run against Mr. Dunham? Any?
Please feel free.
Any objection to the nomination of Mr. Dunham as vice chair? Seeing none? Okay, Mr. Dunham? That leaves the least important seat, chair. I've enjoyed my tenure, been on the board for a number of years, and it was a neat experience, but I'm ready to move to the back of the pack, and would--
But still stay on the board?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Yes. At least until I have another kid, and that's not happening, so yes, I'll be on the board. Any nominations for chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to return the favor and nominate Mr. Cars for chair.
Mr. Cars, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Any other nominations for chair? Any opposition to approval of Mr. Cars as, once again, chair of the Zebra Board? No? With that, it's done. All right. Well, thank you all, it's been a pleasure. Meeting's not quite over, but we made it through the elections, and that was the most difficult part of the night, as far as I was concerned. All right, reports. Since I am still officially chair, I was surprised that Mr. Marsh's chainsaw didn't make it tonight into discussion. For those of you that have been on the board long enough, we had a former board member who, when we had cases in which property was built within the setback, and the remedy was to cut off the house, he said, "Well, let's visualize this with a chainsaw." So that's all I have. Jill, do you have anything for us? No? So somebody else has to close out the meeting? Is that how it works?
Can I adjourn? Actually, I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Ron, for being chair, and I think being on the board, there's been a historical progression, so my thoughts are, I'm not chair for life. One year sounds pretty good, and I think it's good for the board to move things around and allow opportunities to different board members, so again, thank you.
Oh, Jeff?
Indeed, it's been a pleasure, but I guess it's your meeting to adjourn, Mr. Cars, if you want to. We're adjourned? All right. Yep, thank you, guys.
Do we know how many cases we have on tap for next one?
Ms. O'Brien or Ms. Iverson, do you know how many cases we have on tap? Even though we're adjourned, we're all still here and can discuss off the record.
I think there might be three.